All right, I think we're gonna go ahead and start with item number two. And the public communication can come afterwards, after the, all the information's been put out for your consumption. So, we're gonna, first of all, discuss and consider to take action to transfer $200,000 from the contingent uncommitted fund, the precinct one road materials fund. So, Commissioner White, I mean Edwards, excuse me, Commissioner Edwards?
Well, when we passed this budget, it showed I had $204,000 in the budget. There was a transfer in to the, to the, to the budget of 200,000, but it didn't show where it went. It just was, it was a transfer in. When I started, of course, you go most of the year with road and bridge material, the main, the main part of the, of the money goes out at the end of the year when we start doing road repairs. That's when we get our, our chips sealed, our people that come in and do that kind of work, they do it this time of year for us. So, the bulk of the money goes out in July and August, September. So, the last of, the last of June, first of July, I called the auditor's office to talk with Lee, and then I talked with Rusty both, to confirm how much money I was in that line so that I would, would know where to start basing my projects on. At that time, I was assured I had $196,000 in there. We went through, August the 7th, I show I had $164,000 in that line. On August the 25th, I get a letter from Rusty saying, due to the grant not coming in, I had no money in that line, and the $4,000 that wasn't grant money was spent and gone, and they had started pulling money from my special road and bridge fund. I coded all my bills to the regular road and bridge line, in my Edvorm side. And I, I think the proper way to have done this would have been to notify me that they were taking money from my, my special road, because I save that money for bigger, for bigger projects every year. I try not to spend it all the first year if I can help it, because you never know what the budget's gonna bring the next year, so I've got a cushion in my special road and bridge to pick up the load if I'm, if, if my Edvorm side is gonna be like the next year due to the budget. Long story short, I don't have the money to even pay the bills that I've accumulated in the last month due to the road repair I'm doing. And I feel like that, one, I should have been told from the get-go that that was, that money was grant money in that, in that line, and not, you know, not the Edvorm line, I mean money. So, on that, in that regard, I wanna, I wanna move what was taken out of that line back into it, so that I can finish what I started this year.
Do you have any, is that all, Commissioner Edwards?
Well, I would like, really would like for the auditor to explain to me how this all happened.
Well, it's your meeting, so we, I was gonna let the other commissioners weigh in, but-
That's fine, let them weigh in, then we'll talk, you know?
I'd, I'd like to hear what the auditor has to say, Judge, if you will.
Commissioner White?
I'll let Rusty speak.
Commissioner Bruins?
Okay. Each of y'all have, and I think most of the audience members here-
Let me see what you're reading off.
Have this form, so y'all can follow along with me. And, in order to save paper, there's a footprint on front and back, but you've got two budget years here in front of you. This very first budget is for the 2018-19 fiscal year. Then on the back sheet is special road and bridge. So, there's really two budgets per year for precincts. Okay, the budget in question is, is the last page, the 2019-20 budget year. Okay. If you look at the third column, activity year-to-date, that is, the, the first section deals with the revenue. That deals with the revenue that we have received this year through September the 1st. If you look at that last line item on that, on the revenue, is transfer in community block When this budget was established last year, we discussed this, this, getting these monies for road repairs in La Bahia. It wasn't to pay salaries, it wasn't to pay equipment repairs, it was for road repairs. And you, let's go down to the expense, expense section, and there's-
Give them the line item.
It's account number 21-171-506, road materials. There was $204,042 budgeted. The amended budget is as of today, it's still $204,042. Mr. Edwards was in, was advised by Lee, as well as myself, on more than one occasion, that we had not received these grant monies. And I'm gonna refer you back up to line, our account number 21-100-900. There was $200,000 budgeted, but year-to-date activity is zero. You can't spend money you don't have. What Commissioner Edwards has turned in to date is $60,101.63. If you go to the back page, under special road and bridge, you're gonna see a line item, road materials, count number 91-171-506, $100,000. That cost everybody in this tax, in this office, or in this courtroom, one penny of Edvorm tax, when that was assessed last year. One penny. Mr. Edwards refers to that as slush money. If you're not gonna spend it, why, why do we assess the tax? But this 100,000 has not been touched. Now, one thing to keep in mind, if you go back and look at the prior year, Mr. Edwards was given $300,000 for road materials. That's the sum of the year-to-date activity for the general fund, which was $127,000 on a general fund, and $173,000 on a special road and bridge. This year, he spent $60,000, has $100,000 available in special road and bridge that he does not want to spend, and he's saying that he wasn't informed, he was informed, on more than one occasion.
When, when was I informed? Because that's where I'm, I'm lost.
Well, Lee?
When I got the letter on the 25th of August, was the first time I was told I didn't have that.
Did I finish?
Yes, sir, please.
You know what I'm having approximately when you told Mr. Edwards?
A couple months ago, you had called me regarding the budget.
You wanna come speak up here, so I won't get here.
You have some questions on the budget, and I explained to you at that time that we didn't get that grant money, so when you were looking at your budget, you needed to subtract 200,000 off your revenues and 200,000 off your expenses, because we weren't gonna get the $200,000, so you couldn't spend the 200,000. That was a couple months ago, we discussed that.
I didn't remember that. I'm, I'm sorry, Lee, now, when I called, last of June, the 1st of August, I was assured I had that money in there. The first I got, the first knowledge I had of this was after I had started this work work, when I get a letter from you saying August, in August 25th, that I did no longer have that 200,000 due to the grant not coming in.
Oh, I, I, we, we did speak about it a couple months ago, and I thought we were, I thought you understood it, why the timing of the conversation, but I did tell you, you didn't, you had to subtract 200 off the revenues.
Well, here's the thing, if, if that was the case, why did it stay on there? Why did, on August the 7th, I still show that 200,000 on, on the budget? I mean, why, why isn't it, if it wasn't there, it should have been taken off?
We do not deduct from a budget, because there is a possibility that that money might come in. It, it might be remote, but there is a possibility.
But I'm not sure that I could, well, I-
And I, and I told you myself on more than one occasion, and there were, there were supposed, you said you were gonna come up to my office several times, never showed up, and we were supposed to go over this, if you remember.
I remember that. But I don't, I mean, let's go over, you have, if it was, if it was gone, why continue to put in every budget versus actual through August? It showed $200,000 on that line.
It still shows $200,000 today.
That's, yeah, it does. And, and here's the next thing, Rusty, the way that grant works, it's dedicated to certain roads. And, and no one told me that this money that I got in my regular, my regular road and bridge line, I can fix any road I want to with that. That's, that's the, that's the way my budget works.
Special.
Sir?
You have $100,000-
Well-
Budgeted in the special.
I do.
And you have $4,042 that you can spend on whatever road you want.
When you put that, when you put that-
Here, like you said, was for a specific, was gonna be for a specific road. Community block grant money couldn't be used on any particular road of your choice.
And it should not have been in the line that it was in, in a 506 line. That's a, must have general road and bridge repair line.
Under what statute can it not be in there?
Since I've been here, that's how it's worked.
When we had SIRPs-
Since, since I've been here and before, it was not ever split out. It's going to be going forward to prevent this from happening. But again, let's make it perfectly clear, you were told on more than one occasion-
No, I was not. I was not, Rusty. I'm sorry.
Let me, let me break in. When we applied for this grant, we had to use low to moderate income areas. La Bahia and Berkeley both fit the criteria. We sent an engineer out to meet you, and y'all chose the roads-
Wait, wait, I never saw the engineer, I had nothing to do with choosing the roads.
You didn't go out to the late, with-
Never got contacted about it, the, no.
Okay. I stand corrected. The engineer went out and picked the roads that needed to be repaired in La Bahia. And those roads were specifically designated to be repaired with that $200,000. Specifically designated, and it appears to me that you spent that $200,000 on other things. We, and when we put this in the budget, this time last year, we had no idea that all this COVID stuff was gonna appear, and if the COVID stuff hadn't appeared, we would have probably already had our money by now. But everybody started working from home, and production really slowed down, and they hadn't got it done yet. But, the contract, and the details, and how that was supposed to work, was in the, in the grant, and you passed it. And copies were distributed to everyone. Now, I don't know whether you didn't read it-
No.
Or you didn't understand it.
Judge, you're not gonna sit here and tell me, you know, whatever you guys are trying to pull.
I'm not trying to pull anything, I'm stating facts, and I didn't interrupt you.
Excuse me.
When, when people want to give you big buckets of money, there's always strings and ropes attached to it. The city had the same grant. We took a grant. We chose two generators, one at Berkeley, one at La Bahia, for emergency generators for water supply in the event of a large-scale power outage like a hurricane or something of that nature. We put over $200,000 to try to get the auditorium back in shape, and the paving was in your area, and those were specific roads, specific roads. Absolutely specific roads. And where you got the idea that you could spend money out of an account that didn't have any dollars in it, it hadn't been put in there yet. There's no money in there. Rusty has offered to help you understand these spreadsheets, and it, you didn't come for whatever reason, but these, that 200,000, or 257,000, that was dedicated to La Bahia for paving, was for specific projects. And the way that works is this, they choose the roads, they do the engineering on it, they go out for all the bids, they bring it to commissioner's court, we approve the contract, they send us money, we cut the check for the contractor and mail it to them. There's, there's, there's no time when the commissioners touch this money. This is, this is a general land office grant, and there's always strings attached to it. It's very similar, we had Staley Road, Tech Dot, they were gonna, they were gonna put in a lot, and we were gonna put in a little, and everyone named the roads that they wanted to be, be repaired, and I found out yesterday that you went ahead and did Staley Road. And the, and the Tech Dot grants clearly say, you don't start until we give you permission and approval. That permission has not been approved or given yet. Mr. Bruins made a call last week to us, and we told him the same thing. So, you walked away from $53,000 a state month, sometime last week or week before last. That grant, just, just for the record, the two, the, the grant is coming, and you're still gonna get your roads back. No money has been taken from you, that, that should be clear by looking at the spreadsheet. No money's been taken from you. The $200,000 is money we're hoping to get. If you look at the budget, it's, it's abundantly clear, we don't have the block grant yet. That's all I have.
Okay, can I-
Sure.
Judge, the road, my, my 21-171-506 line, that is road and bridge material. You got a transfer in block grant up in the revenue of 200,000. If that money was gonna be put into my expense line, I feel like it should have been labeled as 200,000 block grant, or something. You can't put it in my expense road and bridge, I use that money all year long for, for materials and road repair. And then, but suddenly I've got 204,000 in there, I don't, I don't know that that's a block grant, and no one told me that. And as far as the Staley Road, it's, here again, it's a, it's a communication thing. I found out in an email the other day, that McDeel Road, which was my primary road to repair with that money, had been, y'all had taken it out of the grant process, and I ended up with Shelly and Staley, and I really, Staley was my third pick to repair, because it's a small road and I had the money to do it. So, that's why I went on and did Staley, because I put off that road a while already. But again, I think that if you were gonna give, put 200,000 into my expense line, it should have been marked grant money.
Sir, it is marked. It says, "Transfer in community block grant."
What did you put?
And then, and then, under activity year-to-date, where it says, "We think we're gonna have 200,000 coming in," amended budget said 200,000, and activity year-to-date, zero. So, we're still waiting on them to send that 200,000. That's, that's the advantage of being able to look at these sheets.
I can read it fine.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
So, when we did the SIRPs deal, that was right five years ago, almost six, when, when they did put it in our budget, they put it on the revenue side and labeled it and had its own code, and then it, they did it on the expense side, they separated it out. And I can understand the confusion that he had, because, yeah, it, it all went into his 506, but I'm, okay, that's, that's fine. I don't think he's gonna spend the whole 200,000. What, where are you at, I mean, on?
About 148.
What?
He's got 148,000. We're in the last month of the budget, and I'm betting if you ordered rock today, you probably wouldn't even get it before the end of the month, meaning it's just the end of the year and everybody's trying to order rock.
Well, the rock-
But 200,000 has not been taken into his account, and I personally resent the fact that you said we did something illegal by doing that.
I said that, I said that.
You know, the thing about those Facebook pages is they never go away.
Oh, yeah, believe me.
All right, so listen to what I'm saying, sir.
Why can't we come to a happy middle here, and, and take, because he's already got the rock, and the contractor is starting them all morning.
He has the money in the bank to pay for all this. Here's the reason to answer your question, why, why we can't meet a happy medium. In 2016, we had a $681,124 deficit. That's money that left the building. In 2017-18, $196,172. In 2019-20-
18-19.
This year, we have a surplus of $676,000. You, we've been told repeatedly by the outside auditor and others, that we need to build our war chest back up, a rainy day fund. That's why we, that, that's why we're-
Can I add to where some of that 1 million? Okay, so this is from May, no, this is November of 19th, so this is the end of the budget versus actual for 2019. Okay, so, building and yards was in the red, 415,000. Okay? That's right here, this is what you send us, Rusty, I'm not pulling this out of-
What's your, what's your account number?
Account number is 707, 12-143-707. That's for the end of 19, that's the 18-19 budget. 18-19 budget.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't hear that, I don't-
Yeah, I know, well, well, you were here at the end of it.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, and here's another one, is Sheriff Department, 391,000 over in the red. That million, catch, we're catching up with that million. EMS, 118,000. And we still had 255,000 left in the contingent uncommitted. So, where, where did all that money come from to pay those three budgets that were over, about 120, 390? That's four.
The budget?
Four-ten. Four-ten, another, 415, so that's 825, $825,000. Where did that-
What budget year are you looking at?
18-19 budget. This is the, and it, and it's sent out in November, so it, the numbers ought to be pretty close, right? So-
Well, that's, that's all part of this 1,847,293 deficit-
And that's a-
That occurred before any of us were here. That, that occurs-
It wasn't our bu, it wasn't my budget.
That's why you keep saying we're a million something over, but a lot of this money, yeah, it was over, there, there's, there's almost a million.
But all of that money came out of the county's reserves, let's, let's acknowledge that.
That's when y'all come in.
You were here on November the 19th.
No. I started in January.
Of 20?
19.
Start of 19, this is a November of 19, 2019. You were here.
What is the question?
Well, what y'all keep saying we're a million over, but here's-
We're a million eight over.
Here's three budgets that is way over.
Way over, almost a million dollars, 800,000.
Yep.
Okay. And then, it didn't even come out of the uncommitted for some reason, none of it, I don't know why. Uh, I'm sure the building one was when you paid off the lighting and AC. So, why can't you take, you got uncommitted money, right? We still got 340-something thousand dollars in uncommitted. And, and take, take his number that will balance him out, without pulling out of his, his special road bridge, because the man needs to buy a tractor, he's been saving up that money for a tractor, and, and the, his building, it will fall down the next hurricane, thank God we didn't get these two, but I don't think he needs $200,000. But there's gotta be a, a happy number in there that, that we can come up with and, and work this out. That's just all I'm saying. That's, I mean, is that fair? And it could come out of uncommitted, and that's not taken out of the, that 200,000 from the grant, put that back, and then, that's what uncommitted's for, for, because, I don't know, where is this money? That came out of-
Where, where, if that money wasn't spent, between now and September the 30th, this month, where would that money go?
Well, back to your, uh-
Going to reserves.
But, we have a contractor, it's already moved here, that he sets his prices on the miles of roads that we give him. So, that's, that's not right to pull, I don't know how many miles he had. How many miles of road you-
Probably what? How many miles of road do you have to do?
54, only today, I'm doing five, 5.1. And, and that counts, see, because, when you do, when, when you tear up a road, you gotta put two coats on it.
That's right.
Or if, if it's three tents, I've gotta do six tents.
Well, that's counting, that's in the five miles, okay, so, that's 50,000, because that's 10,000 a mile for this contractor. He's already got the rock ball, right? So, to pay the contractor out of the, out of the, uh-
So, what's your contractor's price?
For David, David.
10,000 a mile.
So, five miles, 55,000.
50,000.
That's a long way from 200,000.
That's a long way from 200,000. Is that a fair, is that a fair deal?
What's wrong with the special money?
... over in 30 days, which you'll start a brand-new budget, so why don't you use that 50,000 of that hundred, of that road and bridge money that he's holding on to? That's what it's designed for, to fix these roads, you know? It's designed to buy equipment, or pay people, or all kinds, but if he's got it, then spend it.
Well, he, he thought he had it.
He still got it, it's 100,000.
He's got $100,000 in his special road and bridge fund, and he's got, and he's got a $55,000 bill coming up.
It's been done before, is what I'm saying, so help the guy out and, and get this done so he can get these other roads done next year.
Well, then, spend this road and bridge-
May I, may I, Judge?
A tractor. You said he needs a tractor, right?
He does.
Okay. Have you been bothered to look at next year's budget to see what's budgeted?
See, I, I haven't, I mean-
Okay, well, you might wanna look there, maybe there's something budgeted, which there is.
I don't know, I don't know, I'm just saying that-
Judge.
That's, that's why I'm saving my special road and bridge, I've told you a million times, for a motor grader or a bridge. Now, I'm giving up a half of it, I'm gonna transfer in that half of it, so if they both go this year, then I got a lot of problems. Then I'm gonna be sitting here asking for something.
If you got, if he's got 100,000 in special road and bridge, and it's right this close to the end of the year, he should spend what he needs out of that to pay his bills, out of us paying out of uncommitted, because he's got the money in his budget.
Other, other projects planned for that.
You got, you got less than, you got less than a month to, to the new budget, he can, he can look at that, but this is nonsense, it's this late in the date. I mean, he's got 100,000, and he's only got a $55,000 bill. Spend the special road, that's what, that's why you tax these people out here.
I know, but it's been done before, so, and, at a big scale, so-
And we have no reserves if we have an emergency.
Well, there's, there's 806, 25,000 of it, right there, of the reserves.
Where?
Right there, that I just-
So, all right, let's, let's get back on track. Do you understand that we didn't take $200,000 from it? Do you understand? Do you understand that?
No, I don't. Because, listen to me, listen to me for a second.
I'm listening, sir.
I understand I have 100,000. Everybody wants to spend my budget for me.
I do.
I understand I have 100,000 in my special road and bridge. That money can be saved for other projects, Judge. I'm looking at $75,000 next year in my road and bridge line. That's, that'll barely cover patch materials for my precinct. That 100,000 is gonna be my savior next year to get something done. I got, I didn't get in this to argue, but I did get in this to try to improve the roads in my precinct. And I'm doing the best I can with what I have. I'm, I'm working with old equipment, but I'm getting it done. That 100,000 that everybody says I should spend is what I'm gonna wanna use for next year, because I only have 70, by our budget we're looking at right now, we haven't passed, but that's what we're looking at for me, right around 50,000 to 75,000 in my expense line. And it doesn't say anything in there yet about grant money, it just says expenses. As this one does, 506 line says road and bridge material. It does not say GLO grant. If this had been done in my, to me, properly, we would've had a line on here like we have in this one that says, in the next budget says special projects. But we should have a line also, I think, for next year for sure, that says GLO grant, so that that money, when it comes in, we know it is dedicated to the GLO grant money. It's not lumped in with all my road and bridge money. And as you read this, that $204,042 is lumped in with all my road and bridge money. It doesn't say I've got $4,042 in my road and, it says 204,000. And I was not notified until August the 25th. I'm sorry, Rusty, but that's the truth.
You were given the contract.
And, and even, and...
You voted on it.
Yes, I did.
And you knew what it entailed.
My budget, the budget itself is not correct. And I've got, if I have to spend all the money, I can cover what I've done with everything. If I take all my expenses out, I can pretty much cover everything I've got with, with the excess I have in my budget and using my special road and bridge. My point is, this was not done correctly. And it shows I had $204,000 that I did not have. But it was in it, and even up to August the 7th, you're still showing me, even after I made the call and started all my work, you're still showing I have $204,000 in there. And you were deducting from that all the way down to 164,000 that you were taking out of that line, that 200 wasn't there. You were still deducting from it. So what am I supposed to think?
Did you code those invoices?
Did I what?
Did you code the invoices?
I'm sorry, Rusty.
Did you code the invoices?
Yes, I did.
And we processed them exactly as you coded them.
506.
And that's when I told you, quite a while back, when I saw those, I said, you don't have, you have not received the grant money.
Rusty?
It can be moved to special road and bridge. And let me point out one other thing.
Quite a while back, it was August the 25th.
That's according to you.
Sir?
That's not what happened.
I'm gonna re, I'm gonna repeat myself here. In this grant money that was supposed to come in, activity year-to-date, zero. There has been no money come in here. It says it in English, right here.
You don't have to tell me what flavor it is.
Community block grant fund, $200,000. Year-to-date, no activity.
Look at the current balance used, 200,000. Activity means I haven't spent any of it.
This is a revenue line, sir, these are...
Looking at the revenue line, right here.
Revenue lines don't read like expense lines, sir.
Look, look at it.
I can see.
I can too.
One thing that the public needs to know, Mr. Edwards can say that there should've been a second line item. But that account would've been road materials as well. These grants are used for road material. They're not using payroll, they're not using anything else. So whether you wanna split it out into two accounts or one, they both read road material.
Yeah, activity, the money hadn't come in yet.
That's what we spent.
These are revenues, these are expenses. There's a difference in the way you look at it. I'm sorry, I mean, I wish I could, I can help you, but this isn't the place. You gentlemen obviously have the ability to do anything you wanna do. My job is to save dimes for the county and to replenish our stock. There is not gonna be time to spend this money before, before the year's over. We'll be processing invoices after sometime in November for this calendar year.
Fifteen of August is the last day we can turn our invoices for this year.
So you obviously have the ability to do anything you wanna do. There's nothing illegal about what you're asking to do. I just think that paying a little bit more attention, calling, asking a few more questions. If you, if you're not clear on what a sheet of paper's telling you, ask someone. I'm more than happy, Rusty's more than happy, to go over this stuff with you so that we don't have this confusion. It's highly irregular to be asking for $200,000 transferred out of a, out of an account less than one month before the year ends, when you can't spend the money.
Judge, it's highly irregular less than one month before I get a notification that I don't have 200,000 in that line. If, and here again, on, on my road and bridge, where it shows in this case, 51,000 activity, if that 200,000 wasn't there, it should've been in brackets showing me I was overdrawn.
You were drawing on an account that wasn't funded, and that's what he told you. You're drawing on an account that's not funded. They haven't give us the money yet, and everyone in this building knows that. You don't see any generators sitting out at the, out at the water plants.
I'm sorry, I...
We haven't started doing the auditorium. The money has not come in yet. They're still in doing the environmental study. We told you that the other day in court. They're doing the environmental study. We don't make the rules, but we'll take their money. You came in here asking for $200,000 to pay a $55,000 bill. Any issue with that? You came in here asking for 200 grand to pay a...
That's what you said I had.
And what happens, and what happens in December when they fund the money and the $200,000 comes in? Are you gonna transfer that money back to the, to, uh, the general fund?
You know, you do know, the end of, end of the year...
That was a question.
I mentioned. Whatever's left at 1st of October goes back into the general fund anyway. That's how we managed to come up with that $2 million that nobody could find but the outside auditor. That's how it became about, because at the end of the year, any excess money went back supposedly to the general fund to help balance the budget, or it was excess surplus.
It provided the cash to back up the checks. We're not Nigerians. We only write checks when the, when the account has money in it. The cash that y'all surrendered back was cash to back up the checkbook.
We had the money, let me, let me, just take for example, my fuel, my fuel line. I've spent, I've got 10,000, I have a $20,000 fuel, and I've spent $10,968. If I don't spend another drop of fuel, I would turn that money back at the end of the year, into the, and back into the general fund. Those bills have already been paid, Judge, that's excess money.
Good, we need it.
But it's not money that's going to bill that hasn't been paid, that's, that is excess. Those bills have already been paid.
If you have that surplus, use that for this road material. You could do a budget amendment, you've got 10,000 there, you've got 6,000 in...
I've got that, Rusty.
You've got 7,000 in building repair, you've got 29,000...
Done the math.
Okay, then answer my question if you would. What are you gonna do if we give you $200,000 today and your $257,000 comes in for to pave these roads? How's that gonna work out? Because it appears to me that you're getting an extra $200,000. Are you gonna pay it back?
I'm not even gonna get it, first off, because it's not gonna come in in a lump sum. The only way that grant works is after I do the work, we turn the bill in and they pay us for that bill.
That's not correct, sir.
That's the way it was explained to me by the grant administrator. Money, I see a lump sum come in.
We get the road portion, and the generator portion, and the generator portion, and the auditorium portion. They come in in separate months. What I'm asking you is, when you get the $257,000 to rebuild these roads in Wabahia in three months, six months, one month, a year, are you gonna, are you gonna replenish what you took extra?
Not taking anything extra.
I, I pass the witness, I'm done. All right, so what would y'all like to do?
I want that 100,000 dollars that's in my, in my special road and bridge back, because that's what I'm saving for next year.
It's still there.
Nothing, none of it?
Okay. It's been drawn, been drawn, and I didn't authorize it either.
So should we take 100,000 dollars out of uncommitted and put back into his, uh, road and bridge?
Second that.
Okay, look, the 100,000 dollars is absolutely there. It's still there, it's line item 91171506. There was 100,000 dollars budgeted, there's been zero activity this year, and there's still a balance of 100,000 dollars. No, sir, it has not been taken. No, sir, it has not been taken.
That's not, I don't have it in front of me.
So gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
You wanna get the public comments?
Let's do that. Have a little cool-in-all session. Are there any public comments that'd like to be made at this time? Anyone? All right. So what's your pleasure, gentlemen?
Judge?
You made a motion to what?
To take 100,000 dollars out of contingent uncommitted and put in his road and bridge. Is that what side you need it on? You need it back in the...
Well, I can't find it, but I did have a report from, from the auditor saying they had started pulling money out of that 509 line. I know, I, I know what you're showing me.
Y'all will look at the last page.
All right, I'm gonna show you the report.
I understand, that's gonna show 100?
It's 100,000.
There's a section, uh, about halfway through, special road and bridge precinct number one.
Number one.
91.
The account number is 91171506. There's 100,000 dollars budgeted, year-to-day activity is zero, there's 100,000 dollar current balance. Mr. Edwards just doesn't understand how to read a budget.
Oh, my God.
Nothing has been taken out, nothing has been moved, anything to the contrary is false.
So nothing's been taken out of this special?
No.
Not at all?
Can you not read either? Look at, look right here on the last page, David. There is special road and bridge.
Road and bridge side.
Okay, look at the very last line item, under expenses.
Did y'all change this?
100,000 dollars.
Judge?
I'm sorry.
What you're showing me, I agree with you.
20.
1,000.
Okay.
There's 100,000 dollars budgeted, zero...
What's showing?
Zero year-to-day activity.
Shows that I have told you the 506.
Money that has been taken out that he told me, where is it taking?
I'm not trying to do to anything, I'm just trying to point out, so you have 100,000 dollars in your account, sir.
I do.
Okay.
If y'all, if you've changed all that back...
Spending out of the general fund, if you go to the page before.
There hasn't been any change.
No? If you go to this page right here, 1920.
All right, so I think we're all in agreement that the 100,000 dollars is still in the account, it hadn't been moved, he's got a $55,000 bill, and he's got excess on a bunch of other different line items.
It's gonna be close.
So that's a question in front of us, the 200,000's out of the question. I don't know...
The 200,000?
Well, that's what the paperwork says that brought us here tonight.
Well...
Well?
I think he was talking about the 200,000.
Okay, well, that goes back to not understanding what you're seeing. There hasn't been anything illegal done, there hadn't been any line item transfers taken out of his, out of his accounts. They simply told him the other day that when he was dipping into that 200,000 dollars that had not been funded yet, that they were gonna have to take it out of something else. No more, no less, that's just, that's just what it is. So we're here to try to explain that to you, that no money has been taken out of his account. None.
But when he gets the bill from that contractor and...
All right, what did I do with those bills?
Well, my question was...
He has 100,000 dollars in road materials under special, and he has additional money in his reserve account under road and bridge special. Plus he has these other line items, so there is no need to take any money or transfer any money when he has it within his budget.
I don't think we would be here if y'all hadn't have thought that we'd taken 200,000 dollars away from you and then pulled another 100,000. None of that happened.
How much has he transferred in out of special road and bridge for his budget?
Zero.
Here we go.
Have you not looked at the budget that I sent you?
Judge?
I looked at it. Why didn't I look at mine?
This was dated 8/25.
70 or 100,000.
My road and bridge, now this is the 90...
You know what I sent you?
The law.
Because his...
This has the law.
Limited, we were not gonna take any money.
Except the others, okay.
Activity to date balance, 43,000.
I didn't look at it.
The special road and, it's titled 91.
All that out of what you got left.
What is it, 191?
Drawing down 200,000 dollars.
It was on the 25th.
All right, this is 91.
Kind of a reserve, but this is headed to suck it out.
Hey, gotta get to the... Eighty, 800,000 came out of there.
91171.
Nothing was...
506.
506.
But he's trying to get 50,000 in, in the...
100,000 dollars.
He's trying to get 200,000.
No, he ain't gonna...
It was just printed today.
Okay.
91.
I've got 825.
He may have enough, yeah.
When I took out the payment, see?
Those are different numbers, Rusty.
Take money out of the general fund.
We're not taking out general fund, taking out the uncommitted.
But that's the general fund.
Agreed.
I'm doing a good job of budgeting money, but...
I said, I appreciate you trying to make me look ugly.
I'm not trying to make you look ugly. You're the one that called this meeting. I didn't call it.
Because, because look what you did to me. What I did to you. You, you financed...
I financed a funny money budget. Explain that to everyone, you don't have to talk to me. Talk to everybody.
What is that 200,000 dollar, why is it showing in my expense line?
Because you have to have a, okay.
Yes, on, on your income, yes, on your, on your revenue side, but down here on my expenses, it shouldn't be in my regular road and bridge expenses. That was money dedicated for a special project.
Okay.
It should not have been in my road and bridge.
All right, if somebody, if Jeff there wants to give me 200,000 dollars to put in my account, I have, here, would you please, you have to have a landing line for that money to land on.
Then it should be labeled what it is, not just lump it into the...
And then you have to have a takeoff line for the money to leave. All right, so we have to put that money, we have to make a budget line for it. There's no way, there's no way...
But, but general road and bridge...
Okay, so we're...
I tell everybody that, what are we gonna do about this one? That I showed, have you? This is on 8/25, it shows you've taken out...
There is, one of them says...
You said, you say you have 140-something thousand dollars in bills.
And that's on top of what, what's already taken out before. I've got enough money to... I've got enough money to cover.
And why are we here?
Because my point is, that two hundred, that extra money was gonna buy me a tractor.
You have budgeted, you have budgeted equipment for next, in the next year's budget, can I?
For next year, yeah.
Okay, that's less than thirty days from now.
I had that extra?
And you have, you have reserves that you're carrying forward, that you're not contributing any money to the next year's budget, you have money that you weren't even anticipating.
We took, we took money out of, for this new budget, we took money out of Mr. Morales' budget, and we took money out of Mickey's budget and David Byrne's budget, and you didn't, you weren't asked to contribute a dime because your coffers are low. And we understood that and we recognized it. You didn't contribute one damn dime, the other three did. And this?
What?
Add on you, you just didn't have the money to do it. So, we didn't?
No, he did seventy thousand dollars, no, they didn't touch it. Oh, really? No. Man, nobody tells us nothing.
It's in the budget that I sent you. And it's, I can see that, you wanna look at the email?
So, I don't know, I don't know where we need to go from here. I'd like to get this wrapped up so we can go have some dinner. What's your, what's your pleasure?
What's your pleasure?
I've made the mo, he's made the motion, I seconded it for a hundred thousand. We can settle this?
Do you need to hold a thousand?
For a hundred thousand?
For a hundred thousand. That's what he said he needed to balance it out. That's what he said he needed to balance?
Hit me through the air, we, it'll all go back in, whatever's left. It's gonna go back. I don't think I need, I don't think I need that much, if I, if I do what, if I, if I go ahead and just let you take my hundred thousand out of my special, with what I've got left?
But you think you can do that?
I think I, it's gonna be really, really close. Probably something we could work out if?
So, do you not wanna take the hundred? Cause you called this meeting and you need to decide what you wanna do.
Well, here's the thing, by, by the numbers that I was provided, I've only got forty-three thousand left of that hundred that's in there. And I'm, I've got about seventy thousand in bills coming in. So, I'm thinking the hundred to cover, it's gonna, it's all gonna go back in in thirty days, what it, what's not used to pay the bill.
Alright, so we're gonna take no action? Or do you wanna vote on it? I mean?
We made it first and second.
Okay, do you wanna take a vote on it? All in favor? Opposed? Aye. As have it, we're gonna give you a hundred thousand dollars. Okay.
Thank you.
Next on the list. Discuss, consider, and take action as part of Commissioner's Court policy for taxpayer transparency requiring each line item transfer to have a separate agenda item for each said transfer, and the elected official or department head be present at the Commissioner's Court to answer questions to the court, why they need such transfer. Mr. Edwards.
Yes, sir. There's, there just seems to be a lot of money moving around that we're not, you know, we're not sure when, when it's being moved and how. I think this is just another way to, to get a little better rein on, on, on all of our finances with this example for one.
Any money moved, but?
I was not, I was not aware if there was money to take. Or y'all can say, y'all can tell me all you want to, but I got it in, in writing, and that's, that's the first time I knew that this was going on.
Alright, I need a, need a motion on that, please.
I'm making a form of a motion that's?
Second? All in favor?